Good evening and welcome to the May 9th meeting of the Brea Board of Education. Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Matt?
Here.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Mrs. Urquhart?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, public participation, first is James Grush.
Good evening, School Board. Hope you had a nice Mother's Day, or you wokesters like to say, Happy Birthing Person's Day. Is that how your kids say it to you? Is that what you say now? Happy Birthing Person's Day? I had a nice Mother's Day, but I see tonight you're voting on the resolution against Ohio HB 322, 327, 616. Let's just be clear, you're voting for the sexualization of kids between grades K through 3. You're voting for that, so where are we going next? Playboy Channel in classrooms? Maybe Penthouse Forum for reading material for kindergartens? Is that where we're going? You're against that. You people need to be removed. And you're gonna waste some more of the district's money on a family engagement and Jedi person, I see. Wasting more money on woke crap instead of worrying about what your job really is. You got one job, teaching kids, but no, you want to focus on the social, emotional, mental aspects of kids. That's our job. That's parents' job. That's not your job. You've got one job. Teach our kids from world-class material. Try to get world-class teachers. That's your job. The whole child isn't yours. That's the parents'. Examples across the country, parents sue school officials for helping their kids transition without their knowledge. Diversity Day, Ohio School District cancels Diversity Day after a critical race theory uproar. They got a good school board down there, not what we got here. Four-year-old gets handbook telling them to identify racist family members. I got the article. Anybody want to read it? Teacher who won South Carolina Teacher of the Year, BMW Advocates for CRT. And by the way, all these school districts that these have happened said the same things you said, Tracy. We don't teach CRT in school. They all said the same thing. Giggs up on what you're doing here. It'll take a while, but you keep moving on. The sooner you keep pressing this stuff, the sooner we can get you out of here. South Dakota Parents Tort School Board Over Pornographic Marxist 12th Grade English Novels. Biden Even Says Biden Claims School Children Don't Belong to Parents When They're In the Classroom. Radical Leftist Ideology, that's what I'm fighting against, and that's what we have in this school district and quite frankly, all across Cuyahoga County. But red wave's coming in November. Everybody knows that, so we'll see. This will gonna be a long fight, but I'm in for the long haul.
Thank you, Mr. Grush. Your three minutes are up.
All right.
You've, you come every time and you speak about examples across the country. Could you please provide us some examples of things that you're upset with that are happening in our district and email those to me?
You say the same things.
Okay, Gina Conner is next.
You say the same things that all these school superintendents said.
Good evening. It is your job to support the social and emotional learning of our students in our district according to the State of Ohio Learning Standards for Social Emotional Learning. And a message from Paolo Di Maria, the Superintendent of Public Instruction in June of 2019, just reading it straight from the State of Ohio website. Dear Ohio Parents, Families, Caregivers, Educators, and Community Partners, together we share a common vision for our children, that they are challenged to discover and learn, prepared to pursue a fulfilling post-high school path, and empowered to become resilient, lifelong learners who contribute to society. This journey begins at home and is led by nurturing parents and caregivers who have the greatest impact on their children's development. The journey is reinforced by a highly effective pre-kindergarten through grade 12 education system that focuses on the fundamentals like English and mathematics, well-rounded content such as social studies, sciences, and the arts, and leadership and reasoning skills like problem-solving and growth mindset. The education system also needs to support the development of social-emotional learning and integrate it as a component of learning. What do we mean by social-emotional learning? Human beings are social creatures. That means in society, successfully interacting with other people is essential for the effective functioning of a community, a workplace, and even a family. People need to know how to successfully interact with each other, establish and maintain positive relationships, feel and show empathy, understand and manage their emotions, and set and achieve positive goals. Social-emotional learning improves children's mental health and helps them avoid risky decisions, make healthy choices, and stay drug-free. Sounds simple, right? But in reality, we need to be more specific and intentional about helping students acquire these skills and understand that they are important to future success. That's why I'm excited to introduce Ohio's Social and Emotional Learning Standards for Students in Kindergarten Through Grade 12. Carefully crafted over a 10-month period by Ohio educators, counselors, and social-emotional learning experts, the standards seek to develop the whole child by helping students build self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, and relationship and responsible decision-making skills. The Social and Emotional Learning Standards are a response to what is already happening in schools and districts across the state. Parents and teachers tell us we need to focus more deliberately on developing these skills in students, and we need clear standards that define social-emotional learning. They recognize a child's social-emotional learning is an important enabler to student's success during a child's formative years while they are in school and beyond. Students with social-emotional learning skills benefit from increased attention, learning memory, and academic success that will put them on the road to a bright future. And there's more. I'll read it next time.
Kim Detmer.
Good evening. Good to see you all.
I think this is Kim Detmer.
Oh, I thought you said Deborah.
No, I'm sorry.
Pardon me.
You're next, though.
Okay.
All right, after Kim. Whatever, that's fine. Go ahead.
Hello. I wondered if I could follow up. I had emailed a FOIA request, Freedom of Information request for the surety bonds for the board and treasurer and superintendent. And Anna responded to me that Jill, you would respond and provide those documents. That was April 1st, and usually it's like eight, like 10 days. So if you could get that to me, I would appreciate it. I did not see those. May I ask you to resend them? Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kim Detmer, and I have two boys in the district. And I'm here to speak in support of the resolution about divisive concepts in legislation. I'm here to support that. I'm not afraid about my children to learn about different races and different religions and sexual orientation and gender identities and just about diversity in general. I am not afraid of that. I'm not afraid of my children to learn the truth about American history and how our past, our country was built, no matter, however inconvenient or uncomfortable or painful or difficult it might be. I'm not afraid for my children to feel both positive and negative feelings when they're learning in the classroom. Because education is more than just reading, writing, and arithmetic. And I also know that education is not a replacement of my parenting. I can still teach whatever I want at home. Education is about learning what to do and what not to do. It's about learning from the past so we can do better and we can, and then also so we can repeat our successes. Education is messy, and it's filled with emotions and feelings. It's messy, just like parenting is messy. But mostly, education is about learning to critically think and to problem-solve. And we teach this by having kids take in a variety of viewpoints, ideas, theories, truth, opinions, experiences, and then helping them and letting them come to their own conclusions and their own decisions. These bills do not support education as I understand it to be. I fully support your resolution in opposition of all of these bills, and thank you.
Dawn Rubensall.
In the mid-1990s, Brea High School started one of the first states, first GSAs, Gay Straight Alliances. In 20, or 2002, a brave student, Brian Ray, came to me and asked to start the Mid Park GSA. So for 20 years, I've been working with queer adolescents. I conducted my doctoral research on counseling queer kids and have probably read more peer-reviewed research than anybody I know on this topic. A March 2022 study published in the Journal of Interpersonal Violence found 82% of trans people have considered killing themselves and 40% actually attempted. Those statistics were even higher in that research for youth. What I've learned is our trans students are most at risk. Most of the students in my GSA at Brea Mid Park High School have either clinical depression or anxiety, or both. Many have attempted suicide or contemplated suicide, and many have turned to self-harm. Many queer people can tell you the story of when they first realized they were not like everyone else. For many queer people, myself included, this is terrifying and isolating. Trans kids have almost no trans role models, so they rely on social media to help them figure out who they are and to find people who understand them. Some students navigate this by embracing the journey, but most of the Brea Mid Park High School students that I work with have found it to be traumatic because they don't know who they are, and they're trying to use all their psychological energy to figure that out. At Brea Mid Park High School, the staff does the only thing we can to keep trans kids safe. We provide them with a safe environment while continuing to educate them so that they can enlist, get employment, or go on for education. From the bus driver who never knows what to expect when their trans rider steps on the bus because they alternate between feminine and masculine gender expression, to the hall monitor who tries as hard as he or she can to use the pronouns the students requested, to the teacher who's changed the preferred name of a student so many times this semester that they now use pencil to write the name on the seating chart, we are all giving students a safe place to explore who they are. We are not pushing an agenda. We are focusing on keeping them alive so that they can go through this unimaginable traumatic experience figuring out who they are in the safest possible way. I'm a proud member of the Brea City School District where trans kids are accepted, even if not always really understood, by all the staff. I thank the Board of Education for the proclamation that they're making today because our trans kids are watching, and they know who has given them a safe space, and they know who is stoking fear in the hearts of voters and many of the other people around here to raise money on their backs. Thank you very much for this proclamation, and thank you for keeping our kids safe.
Dave Cecarelli.
So I received a letter from a student at BMHS. They wanted me to read it to you guys today. It goes like this. "The school district is constantly worried for children of color and any race besides the white people. They are constantly worried about the LGBTQ+ community and making sure that they are being respected by the same-sex relationships, pronouns, or anything else the community involves. I have nothing against any of this, but as someone who is a conservative and doesn't hide it, I am meant to feel ashamed for my beliefs. The people I surround myself with at school are meant to feel ashamed." You say that the school should be diverse, but only when it comes to the one side. "In the last week, I've been accused of being racist multiple times, as well as my friends. We have had particular groups of people bark in our faces for shirts that we have worn to support veterans." I have teammates even accusing me of this. "It seems to me that everyone is valid to have an opinion until it's the wrong one. An opinion is a statement that can't be proven, and a fact is a proven statement. Just because I have certain beliefs does not mean my opinion is wrong. I am not affecting your life with my beliefs, so why let me be attacked for them?" Just last year, I had a teacher who failed me on an assignment when she asked my opinion on the Capitol riots. I asked my, I stated my opinion and wrote it nicely. When it was returned, I had an F. The teacher made it very clear of her beliefs, so I was not surprised. If you want inclusivity, then I, then I too, with conservative belief, have to be included. Maybe instead of bringing politics into it, start including special-needs kids who are constantly bullied. What about the kids who are suffering from depression and anxiety? Start with the most important, where the most inclusive, inclusivity needs to take place." So, I mean, some of our students all believe that also. I mean, she's, she's not the only one. I mean, there's two sides, but it only seems like there's one. I mean, it seems like we need to focus, I mean, you say all kids, but you only focus on one group. Thank you.
If you could encourage that student to share that letter with any one of us or the superintendent, so that we can address it. I mean, I, having you read it is one thing, but there's nothing actionable that will come of that, but if she, well, but if, if that student would like to share it and would like to have a discussion about it, please encourage her to, so, thank you.
Kate Brown. Kate, go ahead, come up.
My name's Catherine Brown. I am a licensed social studies teacher, not in district, but I'm licensed through the State of Ohio, which means I have a unique perspective on some of the issues that are going on. And right now, it seems to be more of a political fever dream that is incoherent and scrambling for something. I don't really understand what exactly the end goal is. Teachers are consistently struggling to reach each and every one of the standards outlined by the Ohio Board of Education. If you talk to any teacher in any district, you will see the look of frustration on their face, that they have so much to get through, they have so little time, and they are struggling to meet the needs of kids who are not only dealing with a variety of academic issues, but also social, emotional, and home-life issues. There is not one single teacher that seems to be advocating for programs and things that are actually minimizing a student's experience. And as a teacher, I'm horrified that the, the discussion, the whole civic debate right now is about who is being mistreated when what we're trying to have a discussion about is what the students need in a district. And I'm, I'm really, really confused about this idea of persecution that seems to be coming out. It is the kids, like someone said, it is the kids who are trans that are suffering. It is not the kid that goes by unharassed, that has an average, grade point average, average life. It are the kids who are getting targeted are kids from a variety of minorities that we have at this school that populate Brea Mid Park School. This isn't shocking. We know this. The counselors know this. The teachers know this. I'm pretty sure that the Board of Education knows this. And I'm frankly quite frustrated that on a daily basis, I'm getting updates from people around the area that are saying, "You need to show up to this because there are people out there that are actively pushing not only misinformation, but this, this idea that people are somehow being persecuted by talking about divisive issues." Divisive issues don't exist. That is a figment of your imagination. And if the board is willing to stand up and say, "You know what? These House bills are wrong. We find them disingenuous to education." I applaud you, and I need you guys to remember that people who are thoughtful, who are, who are constantly thinking about what is best for our kids, that is the majority in this district.
Okay, next we have some presentations on new curriculum. Sarah Lynn. Sarah Banza, I apologize. Are we starting with AP Human Geography?
Hi, my name is Sarah Banza. I'm a curriculum coordinator in academic-
Sarah, excuse me a minute. Mr. Grush, if you're gonna have a conversation, could you go out in the hallway, please? Thank you.
No worries, okay. I'm Sarah Banza. I'm a curriculum coordinator in academic affairs. I'm here tonight with some teachers to present some new curriculum, proposed curriculum for the high school. So the first course we would like to present is AP Human Geography. So I'm gonna let Mr. Bratton here talk about an overview of the course.
Move this up a little bit. I'm a little taller than Sarah, so hope I don't break it. We're really excited as a social studies department to introduce this class, which would be an AP class for our ninth graders. You can kind of see the bullet points up there. The thing that we're most excited about is the skills that our students will be introduced to as a ninth grader, which are really all the skills that in all the AP classes, they are expected to be able to demonstrate on AP tests and unit tests. So connecting the geographic concepts and processes to real-life scenarios, that's a big one. And then especially the second one, understanding information shown in maps, tables, charts, graphs, images, and landscapes. This is something that they have to do in really all their AP classes. You know, I think we had over 700 kids take an AP test this spring, which to me is unbelievable. And if we had the opportunity to extend that out and teach ninth graders, you know, how to take an AP class, I think that it's just a great opportunity. So that's a basic overview of the course. And obviously, everything is, well, you're gonna go over this slide, right? So I'll let Sarah go over the textbook selection.
So we did have a process to select a resource. First thing, that all AP classes are aligned and organized by the College Board. So the College Board actually gives the course content, and they give requirements to meet the AP standards. And one of those requirements is that the students are provided a college-level textbook. So that's, that's one of the requirements to meet AP. The College Board also provides a list of textbooks, so 10 to 15 textbooks that are aligned with the course, aligned with the curriculum, and aligned with the AP exam that's given for the class. So after we required that list of textbooks, we formed a committee, which was myself, Mr. Bratton, and Mr. Mike Carpenter, which is another social studies teacher in, in the department. And we wanted to narrow that selection down based on some criteria. So that criteria would be that the book was published within the past three years to have updated information. It has some sort of online textbook and resource component because of a lot of the blended learning environments our students are participating in. Also, it, we wanted it to be highly recommended and vetted throughout the AP Human Geography community. So the AP Board provides forums with other AP Human Geography teachers, and we were looking for that to be ranked very high. So once we kind of narrowed down that criteria, we came up with three textbooks that fit that criteria. One of them is Human Geography: A Spatial Perspective from National Geographic. We have Human Geography: Landscapes of Human Activities from McGraw-Hill, and Human Geography for the AP course. Those three textbooks met all that criteria that was outlined. We have to do another audit once that process happens in order to actually select a resource. So we get those books and those online components sent to us so we can look a little bit more into some of the criteria. So the first one is alignment with the AP exam and alignment with content standards. Once again, the College Board provides all of the, the standards and an outline of what is covered on the exam. So we have to kind of put the two against each other to see if alignment exists there. This was also, the book that Mr. Bratton's gonna talk about, was also one of the highest reviewed in the community feedback from the AP Human Geography Forum. And then we wanted to make sure it had additional resources provided. Are there online components for students? Are there online components for teachers? Are there practice questions? Are there practice assessments? Does it mirror, do questions in those practice assessments mirror the questions from the AP test? And once again, Kevin kind of spoke to this, but this is a ninth-grade course for AP students, and AP, AP typically isn't something that ninth graders take normally, but we wanted to make sure that this was a good introductory course to get them exposed to AP. So we have to make sure that the course content in the textbook is leveled appropriately for a ninth grader.
So the book that we all really liked was the National Geographic book, which Sarah said was- probably the highest rated book by the AP Geo community. The website is phenomenal. The online component is really great. It'll be easy for our kids to use. There's a lot of alternative resources with that. That really was the best one. And what I found was it was the easiest for the kids to navigate, as I let my seventh graders kind of play with it a little bit. And, you know, I showed them all three, and they said that, you know, this one was the best one in terms of just ease of use by kids. So book's great. It's phenomenal. It's highly recommended. And like I said, we're just really excited to have now four AP opportunities for our kids, nine through 12, as, you know, I think it's a goal of our social studies department to provide more opportunity and equity for kids to take AP classes, not just your traditional high flyers, but other kids too, that we feel can benefit from this. So, thank you.
Are there any questions that we can answer? Sure.
Is it gonna replace something in the current ninth grade?
So it's it's going, right, this year, we had a Modern World History and honors Modern World History. So instead of that offering, students can either take the regular leveled Modern World History or AP Human Geography.
Okay, and that'll count towards graduation and honors diploma and all that?
Absolutely.
Are there any prerequisites to sign up for the class?
No, just a desire to take the course.
I had one question. Is it one semester or two semesters?
It's a full year.
One year. Thank you.
Mrs. Bednarz, you didn't highlight the fact that you are one of the co-authors on one of the books. Was your name listed?
Oh, no, I am not that high level. I'm gonna, I could take credit, but.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, difference, Sarah, and I missed, will this be happening this fall, this coming fall, or is it next?
Yes, yes. We have 104 students, pending approval, have 104 students signed up for the class already, actually.
Well, I love that you got input from the kids, too, that they got a chance to see the book. I think that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more course to talk about, and that is for math. So Mrs. Carrie Rice is gonna help for that one. So we are gonna present a course proposal for mathematics, high school mathematics, called Quantitative Reasoning. I do think it's important that we start with a rationale behind the new course. So basically, in 2019, ODE in Ohio began working on something called Strengthening Ohio High School Mathematics Pathway Initiative. It's a very, very long name. But this is to be implemented for the 2223 school year. This is basically initiative, an initiative to modernize high school math and the options for high school math. So there's some new guidance around Algebra II equivalent courses and their new pathway to post-secondary success. The goal of this committee was to really align system structures in high school math to create some more guidance for students. So the different pathways for Algebra II equivalent courses, instead of taking Algebra II, were designed with a focus on equity, rigor, relevance, coherence, and flexibility. So there's really two reasons that this change is happening through ODE. The first one is a changing landscape in careers. To be honest, Algebra II is not necessarily the most relevant subject for every single student if they're not going to be in a career such as an engineer or a finance major or something that involves physics. So that that course content could be irrelevant depending on the student's career path. So really, only if the student needs to go on to calculus is this really a necessary course to take. So they tried to develop courses that would align more towards different career paths, and quantitative reasoning is one of them. So a social worker or a web developer, those those careers are aligned more with the course that we're gonna present. The other one is the Changing Landscape in Higher Education. A lot of times, college mathematics is a gatekeeping mechanism for students in college. So there is a shift to really try to make sure that we're matching the math course with the appropriate major for college.
Okay, so like what Sarah just said, she mentioned that ODE developed a new math pathways to give kids more options based on their potential future goals or careers or interests. As a side note, I was on that state committee, so it's a lot of information that we're trying to put into a very short presentation. So the state did not change the requirements of Algebra I and Geometry. All students do need to still take that to graduate in the state of Ohio. But what will happen is after their geometry year, whatever, whether it's sophomore or junior, they will have many more options. And during their geometry year, their math teachers and their counselors will start having those conversations with them. You know, what do you really want to do out of high school? Do you want to go right into the military? Do you want to go to college? And what are your interests? Do you want to go into the workforce? And so the new math pathways really gives kids more options. One of the courses that's equivalent to Algebra II is Statistics and Probability. We already teach that, so that was an easy transition. So now our Statistics and Probability class will be equivalent to Algebra II. So that was a plus for our district because we already are teaching it. And then the other course, like Sarah said, was the Quantitative Reasoning course. And we chose that one because it modeled a course that we were already teaching, Advanced Algebra. So we thought, well, why reinvent the whole wheel and kind of adapt that course to meet the state's requirements? So all new courses have to have the same rigor as Algebra II, and that's based on the standards. And then, so after a student is out of geometry, that's where they kind of go down their pathway. They can still take what we would call the traditional path, Algebra II, pre-calc, and then graduate. Or after geometry, they could take Stats and Probability their junior year, and then the QR course their senior year, or flip-flop. So those two are not sequential. They could take them either year. They could take them at the same time if they really wanted to. A student could, you know, take the QR course their junior year, and then they are thinking, oh, maybe I should take Algebra II because I'm kind of thinking engineering now. They can still do that their senior year. So it's not like they're, they have to opt out of Algebra II. So all three of those courses would be equivalent in terms of rigor, like I said, and standards. And so what is quantitative reasoning? It is a course that is the application of some base, basic math skills and the foundation of algebra. It's really where students will analyze and interpret information that's relevant to their daily lives, which is super, super cool. We're really excited about it. And then finally, it really provides students the opportunity to develop and use critical thinking, which we know that's what colleges and employers are looking for in new here, new hires. That's what they want. We want kids to be able to critically think out of whatever course they take. So that's why we chose QR. Do we need to talk about, there is not a textbook, so that we're not presenting a textbook. The publishers aren't just there yet, but we do have information from ODE that will help us teach the course. Okay, questions?
They're like, what? Just so new, especially when you've had two kids already graduate and one that might be taking this class next year. So when, how does this relate to like entrance exams for math in college?
Well.
Is there Algebra II stuff on those exams?
Yes. So the standards that the QR course follows are the Algebra II standards. It's just how they're presented. So it's it's more like, here is this project. They're very much project-based. Here is this idea, and then the standard are kind of just built in, the skills that are needed. But the the overarching thing is the actual, how can we critically think to figure out this problem? So yeah, so they are based on the Algebra II standards, just they're done a different way.
Same endpoint, just a kind of a different pathway to get there.
I just want, Sarah, before you step away, will you just let the board know the process then, especially with the AP, the new AP textbook?
Sure.
What will happen now? So starting on Wednesday, at the Board of Education, the curriculum is gonna be available for anyone into, anyone to come into the office and review. So really, they just need to come to the front desk at the board, ask to review the curriculum, and there's copies of the AP Human Geography textbook. The content standards from AP Board will be printed, as well as all the resources, resources from Quantitative Reasoning that ODE provides. And that will be there for one full week.
And then you'll have that on the next board agenda for board approval?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Can you have those here at our next meeting before, so we can?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It is, yeah. We've had teachers working on curriculum mapping, mapping out the standards, looking at different resources that we already have. It's 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 quite similar to a course that we already have at the high school, Advanced Algebra. We just kind of have to build that out a little bit more, but we do have a lot of teachers hard at work on the curriculum right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, and Carrie, and Kevin. Appreciate it. And now we have another presentation on Nutrition Services. Brianna Cates. We haven't seen you in a while.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brianna Cates. I am the supervisor of Nutrition Services for Berea City School District. All right, so first off, I would just like to give a thank you to my Nutrition Services staff. I would be dismissed if I did not. Their work ethic, extreme dedication, constant problem solving, and their work ethic was absolutely phenomenal. The past two years during COVID, I haven't seen you guys since before COVID, so they've been doing just phenomenal work. They've made up to three times the amount of meals in just this past school year, in 2021, 22, than they have in the past. We'll kind of get into detail about that. And then even with supply chain shortages, increased meal participation, and constant change, my staff was still able to feed our students every day. So just great work to them. So last year, we were able to participate in a summer feeding program. Typically, we are not eligible. We do not meet the 50% eligibility requirement for free and reduced meals. So because of COVID, they waived that eligibility requirement, and we were able to feed our community, not just our students, but our community last summer. So we did a nine-week program, providing seven days' worth of breakfasts and lunches. We were able to feed over the weekend as well to our community. We averaged about 550 to 600 meal bags each week, providing around 4,000 breakfasts and 4,000 lunches per week. And we also fed our summer camp students that were at Brook Park Elementary School as well. So that was an average around 200 breakfasts and 200 lunches per week. We thought we were going to be able to do a summer feeding program this year, but they just told us that we won't be able to. It'll be ending at the end of the school year. So my goal specifically for the 2122 school year was to increase meal participation for breakfast and lunch. And I'll kind of just go through that. We, I'll I'll talk about that on the next slide, along with monthly claims and revenues, and fast, efficient lunch lines. That's definitely been a work in progress this school year. As you can imagine, with our increased meal participation, so we've been using all hands on deck during the meal service to get students through the lines as fast as possible. Some schools get them through the line within 10 minutes, which is a very short period of time to serve a significant amount of students. And positive feedback from students. I try my best to pop into breakfast and lunch as often as I can for feedback regarding meal items, and I receive a lot of feedback from my staff and student monitors often as well. And then minimal food waste. So we use offer versus served. So students only have to take three out of the five meal components, so that increases waste. And we also implemented share bins in majority of our cafeterias, and that hopefully will be up in full throttle in anyone's that are not next school year. Students can take, can place packaged, unopened foods in the share bin for other students, and then they're also able to take items from the share bin if they're still hungry as well. So meal participation, just to kind of give you a brief overview. Our enrollment obviously goes up and down, but at the time I I did this, it was 5179. And so our average daily participation, typically, we do 15, this was in the month of March 2022, 1579 breakfasts and 3,200 lunches in one day. So that monthly comes out to 34,729 breakfasts and 70,593 lunches. So really a lot there. I do just want to go over school breakfast. We've had a crazy increase in school breakfast this school year with all meals being free this year due to COVID. So I put a little quote in here, "On average, students who eat school breakfast have been shown to achieve 17.5% higher scores on standardized math tests, and attend 1.5 more days of school per year." So we did have to transition breakfast in the classroom in a lot of our schools, which was very different for a lot of teachers. So I thank them as well for helping us out with that process. But we have hit some barriers with bus schedules, late student arrivals, some teacher pushback, messiness, and time to eat. So we've really tried to combat these issues by certain delivery methods. For example, at BPE, we have huge carts that we push down to the common area so the teachers can just grab their bin. We label them, and we do grab and go at the entrances. And then last year, I did a teacher survey, so syrup and craisins are not a huge tip for them. So we got, we got rid of those. So don't worry, just for breakfast this school year. So try to help them out. So the next few slides are just some meal pictures because I think that's fun, and I think you should see what our students are eating. So here's mac and cheese, and we like to do a special. We're partnered with a local dough company. They're amazing. They do whole grain cookies. They taste phenomenal. They don't taste like whole grain. They also do local pizza dough. They do bread bowls for our chili bowls. So just delicious. Chicken and waffles. Highly recommend, if you can accommodate, that we have chicken and waffles to really have one. They're delicious. And then we have our pepperoni calzones. Let's see, and here's some more. So we have our walking tacos. We have popcorn chicken mashed potato bowls. And then obviously, pizza, which is one of the favorite days. We also do staff meals. I have to give a shout out. This is at Brook Park Elementary. Our manager does just a phenomenal job. She makes these little taco shell bowls herself, puts a little cute menu out. So really, obviously, increasing participation. And just a few more. We now have our smoothie cafe at our high school, which has been a pretty big hit. I plan to make, to have more options next school year as meals will not be free. So we'll have more time and hands-on to do that. And then we're always serving fresh fruit and vegetables. And then here's just a few pictures of our staff in action. Awesome. And just two more quick slides. So I was able to go to Legislative Action Conference this year. It was really to advocate for the extension of free meals and meal pattern flexibilities. Just an amazing opportunity to meet school nutrition professionals across, you know, the United States. Unfortunately, the waivers were not added to the bill this year, so waivers do end June 30th. So just an FYI, meals will no longer be free next year unless you're eligible and apply for the Free and Reduced Meal Program. So we're really, really trying to get the word out for parents to apply for that program so we get everybody on board that needs to be. And then just quickly, my goals for next school year. Continue with increased meal participation. I really want to look at the 1920 school year. Obviously, this past school year won't be a good comparison. Increase à la carte sales. Re-implement share bins in all of our cafeterias. Increase staff participation. Diversify menus, add more variety, and try new recipes. diversify menus, add more variety, and try new recipes. Just the past two years haven't been, we haven't been able to provide as much variety with serving so many students. And I'm in the process of implementing a managers' training program for potential incoming managers to take. And that is it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just have one quick question.
Oh, I was like, where's that coming from?
Could you remind me, when I had a student at Grindstone, they introduced the share bin concept, and I wonder how effective that has been in reducing waste? And have you been able to have share bins at all during COVID, where they totally shut down?
Yes. So we were able to re-implement them this school year. During the 2021, we were not. The Health Department said absolutely not with COVID. So this school year, we were, and it has been a huge hit. I know at our fifth grade wing, they never have any food left over. I mean, well, my niece says, "I take like five of the strawberry things." I'm like, "That's not the point." But it's really nice for them to have something that they, you know, if they're hungry, they have something that they need. So obviously, offer versus served is really supposed to help with that, but the share bin obviously helps even more. So.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Of course.
Okay, next we have our superintendent's update.
Update on Friday, but I wanted to make it public information also is that it's my, I'm making the recommendation to the board that we are not going to continue with the Titans Virtual Learning Academy next year. The numbers I had prepared for you, I think, are pretty much, the data supports that it has not proven to be successful. We had about 115 students in the, in TVLA for the first semester, and we're about the same. We had kids that came back into school and kids who went to TVLA and basically the swap. We kept around the same number of students. What we're finding is, and I put in my information, and I probably overput the information about what the state kind of put on. This was one of those situations where we had to make a decision, right? So last spring, because we needed to get enrollment numbers. And then after we did that, made the commitment to it, also, the state kind of changed the rules, or actually, the state then put out the rules. One of the biggest problems that we have had this year is the issue of attendance and tracking attendance. So Steve Blatnick and I talked a lot about this, and kudos to Steve and all the work that he's been doing on this. But I talked to Steve about it. One of the biggest concerns was the attendance and attendance requirements and the information that was placed on us after we actually already committed to do it. So part of what the kids, and being an online program and being a self-paced program, I don't think the state did a really good job of making sure that, I mean, kids learn at different paces, right? But yet there was still a requirement for kids to have so much on learning, online learning time, and then they also had to do their offline learning tracking. And it was kind of nightmarish to track that down because kids are like, "Well, if I can finish my work and I can finish it while I'm online, why do I have to do anything else?" And then there's, the attendance hours were terrible. I mean, they were just terrible. But some were because kids were failing classes. And I think I put that information out there, the number of classes that students did fail, and it's very disheartening. You know, there were a lot of times where we brought kids back because they had not been successful either with their attendance or with their actual workload of getting things done. So again, we did this necessitated based on the needs and the health concerns of COVID, and I think we feel that we're in a better spot now. And again, that we have the data that just doesn't prove that it was successful for the vast majority of our students. So my recommendation is we don't move forward with offering the virtual learning opportunity for the 2223 school year. So questions? I tried to give you as much data as I could to support that decision. Yeah, so if that's the case, if the board's, you know, pretty much in support of that, what I'm going to ask Mr. Blatnick to do is next week, make sure we notify families to let them know that that won't be an option for next year. So, thank you.
Okay, next we have contract approval for the Berea Federation of Teachers. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the 2022 to 2025 contract between the Berea Federation of Teachers and the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Tracy, can you just fill in, so the public knows the process, that, or if Brian wants to come up and talk about that?
Brian, you want to talk or you want me to talk? Okay, let's do a little bit.
Be representative of the way we do things here.
Yes.
Dom, I'm thrilled to be able to present a contract that we ratified a little more than a week ago. It was very concerning to us that there was such a large change on the administrative side in a short amount of time. And we definitely have a way of doing business in Berea that we always focus on, is it good for kids? And are we solving problems? And to do that, you need to take a lot of time, and you need a lot of, to build up a lot of trust. And quite frankly, with all the noise that we face as a school district, time is precious. But I'm very happy to report that we took the time to do the Berea Way, is what we call it. The idea of focusing on the problem, solving the problem, never bringing our egos to the table. And again, I always tell people on my team, on my tombstone is going to be the words, "Is it good for kids and can you live with it?" Right? When you negotiate a contract, you usually don't love it all and hopefully don't hate it. And I think we definitely got there. The challenges are, as you all well know, continuous. They're mounting in their difficulty in solving. But we took the time with people that have a whole lot of experience bargaining in a different way. But they took the time to learn our way and really bought in, and it was really successful. And we present the contract to you today, again, ratified, and we look forward to working from here because once you set the contract, that's kind of the first step. Then making sure that everything works out because a lot of times, the intent that we had isn't quite read by certain peoples that way. So we work through the process and we keep at it because what we do at the negotiating table is definitely kind of the modus operandi that goes all the way down through our district committee and to our building committees. And in every committee, we have this idea of focusing on the kids and solving the problems that we have and not worried about egos. So.
Yeah, I will. I'll just say a couple of things, and Brian, I think we both echoed this. I know we did talk about our, the administrative team that came to the table, and I think Katie Rolland had the most experience, and you'd done it twice?
Don't forget Vince, who's done a lot.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Vince. I apologize. But so was Katie and Vince on the team, and then really the rest of us, I think Nick had negotiated, had you negotiated with them one time? So the rest of us were new to the process, and I, we sat, I told Brian, I remember my interview question, and I left that interview for this job. I left that interview because Brian asked the interview question about negotiating. And I shared, I don't know if you remember, but I shared that I, in my previous district, I had negotiated probably five different, five contracts or more. And I hated it. I hated the process. And it was because we sat on two sides, we sat on two different sides of the table, and I don't think we listened as well. And I, being a part of this team, and I think we all walked away with a great feeling that we really truly listened to each other. And at the end of the day, that's what makes the difference, right? What Brian says, can we live with it and is it good for kids? And listening and understanding people, and I think we did that. I think we did a great job of that. I was proud of the work that our team did. I loved working with Brian's team. We were able to, I don't know, you just, we said we kind of walked away like we're part of family now, right? And it was just a really, really good feeling. Me coming into, I still feel so new that the pandemic has, you know, it put burdens on all of us. It put burdens on us and working with the union of things that we had never, ever encountered before. But when it came to sitting down and looking at the contract and having open and honest conversations and listening to each other, we were able to do it, and I appreciate the, I appreciate the work that everyone did.
I'll just finish by saying, you know, any great organization, it starts at the top. And we were able to have success because of the atmosphere that you've created with this board. And luckily, and not luckily, we worked hard, but we got there. And we're going to have more challenges, without a doubt. That's the nature of the business we're in right now, and I look forward to meeting those challenges.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that was on your team and the administrative team.
You know, people on my team, sorry. Kim Luther is our state field rep is in attendance. Gene Rebar is the treasurer of the BFT. Matt Petrus is our grievance chair, also on the team, representing middle school. And Tom Andrews is our vice president, and he represents middle school. Several of the other members that wanted to be here, but most of them are sick. They've got that bug going around. They just didn't feel well, so I excused them and said, you know, "Go home and get better." So, but they all definitely wanted to be here, and again, we're happy to be involved in the process.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Epstein.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you and congratulations. Okay, next, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the addition of the Coordinator of Family Engagement and Jedi Position, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
So the board had asked for me to put together just a, just a quick presentation about the position and really to talk about, more than anything, the why behind it. So, Nikki, yeah, if you go to that first slide, so I just remind the board and the community that part of our current strategic plan around culture and safety is ensuring a safe and supportive learning environment for all of our students, staff, and community. And in particular, several of the action steps on there involve nurture a culturally responsive school environment that supports and encourages our students, staff, parents, and community members to contribute their talents and be recognized for their efforts. And then also to foster a learning environment that values and supports the diversity, uniqueness, and individual talents of each of our students. Let's go to that next slide. So this also I wanted to put in here, just again, to show the board that how much, this is just embedded in what we do. It's embedded what we did years ago when the strategic plan was created back in 2016. And we've also made sure that part of that is still involved in our Portrait of a Graduate. So, and again, we're going to, this is something that, this is a lot of, this is a lot of work. And we've got the shell of the Portrait of a Graduate done, but now we've got the work to do. But part of it is within that, and again, the Portrait of a Graduate talks about our collective vision, articulates our stakeholders' aspirations for all of our students. And in the Portrait of a Titan, I'm not going to call it Portrait of a Graduate anymore, Portrait of a Titan as part of our empathetic competency, and you might not be able to see it on there, but what it does say is that a Titan shows respect to other people and cultures by demonstrating an awareness and sensitivity to their feelings, opinions, and experiences. So again, wrapped right into what we're doing, it's also a part of our Portrait of a Titan. So the question is why? Why this position? So I go back to the board resolution, right, that was done in July of 2022. And again, in that board resolution, resolution directed us to form a committee. From that committee, the work that we've done over the last year and a half has everything to do with, the focus of that was working with our stakeholders and creating our vision statements from the Jedi Task Force. So this year, the work that we did with that was through the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio. They led that work with one of their Jedi leaders, and they, a lot of what they did was revolved around the work they did with the task force. They also did a lot of professional development for our staff, and so that's, we were with them. So the second thing, as far as why we're looking at this position and not continuing with the Diversity Center. The Diversity Center contract was with a person, we had a person, but that person wasn't full-time in our district. So the hours that they do is based on, it's a full-time, but it's, ours could be, we do professional development, and they bring in 20 people to do the PD, and they're here for six hours. Well, that's 20 people times six hours. So we didn't have a dedicated person that was in the district every single day doing the work. A dedicated person in the district who could still get out and work with families and community and other things. The third thing then is to continue and lead the work with Jedi and our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion. And then another thing that the board had asked about was to start to look back and do the work with our family engagement team in order to, I put that in there, to be the better together. So I was revisiting some of those videos that Mrs. Detmer and Mrs. Loznik had done. Again, when I came into the district, it was a short-lived amount of time. That kind of has fallen to the wayside, and we believe that that's important to start that role and have a dedicated person in our district who can start to do that work again. So it goes back to our why, and when we talk about our why is that just to ensure that all of our students feel safe, valued, and loved. And I loved what Dr. Rubensall said earlier, and as she's saying what she said so eloquently, I'm thinking about this right here. That's our job. That's our job as a district is to make sure all of our kids come to school every single day and feel safe, valued, and loved. So a couple of things, oh, if you go to the next one, just a couple of things to share too, and someone had shared this with me. Just to give you just an idea, there's obviously changes in jobs, what's going on around the country. But LinkedIn put out the 2020 jobs on the rise here in the United States. So the fastest-growing jobs over the last five years. Then they had a list of 20, so I just put, I just put the top 10 on there. But obviously, if you look at number two on there, Diversity and Inclusion Manager, those are being hired and across the country in businesses, in governmental offices. The Supreme Court just hired their own Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Specialists to work within the Supreme Court. But they're being hired to lead teams of people who are supporting company initiatives related to the increasing attention being given to diversity, equity, and belonging within an organization. I have to tell you, I thought was interesting, I was at my son's graduation yesterday, and the graduation speaker was the CEO, COO of Intel. And big company coming to Ohio, and he talks so much about diversity and diversity in the workplace, which again, we just translate that to here. But so much of that and the diversity and the attention that we pay to diversity, that truly does lead to innovation. So it was, it was just, you know, listening to that, I think it's really interesting to hear. But again, so one of the second fastest-growing jobs over the last five years is that Diversity and Inclusion Manager, vaccine specialist, so kids be watching. One of the other things is, is just to look at some other districts in our, up here in Northeast Ohio. Beechwood, Cleveland, Akron, South Yuculonhurst, Shaker, Bedford, they all have a similar position to this. But there are other districts that if they don't have their own dedicated person, they are either contracting through someone like the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio, or they are bringing in some type of an individual consultant, and they're contracting with them on the side. But, you know, it's more and more what we hear about, and again, the work that we have to do. I'm excited to be able to have this position, that this can be someone who, like I said, can be part of our Titan community on a daily basis and help to find the resources in the community that we need to reengage that family engagement team, and then really to work with us as a district of how we actually, through that lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion on a daily basis. Questions?
Can you tell us what the process is for hiring this person?
Yeah, so once the board approves the job description tonight, then I will meet with Vince, and we're probably going to get that posted here soon, and we'll start an interview process. So I would like to have that person, obviously. So I would like to have that person, obviously, before summer, that we can start to have some conversations over the summer to start, get ready for the next school year.
I think the job description is a really tall order, but I'm really excited to see who will come in and work with us in, in these two really critical areas. I'm serving as a member of National PTA's Family Engagement Committee, and I shared with them that we're being asked to approve this new position, and they were ecstatic. So many school districts around the country would love to have what I think we're going to have here. But it's also cool that in our area, we're sort of playing catch-up to other school districts who are a little further down the road on this than we are. And we had a very good experience working with the Diversity Center, but I love that we're going to have somebody in-house.
Yes, I agree. Okay.
The fact that you're rolling in the family engagement portion of it, it kind of broadens.
Yeah.
And it speaks more to, more to than just the student, school, school and the community.
Yes.
So yeah, there are, there are so many, so many angles to this. And with all these angles are just so many benefits. I look forward, it's like others said, I look forward to how this grows and how this rolls out.
Yeah, it is a tall order. It'll be, it'll be interesting to see, but you find the right person, and they can just, they can do just about anything. So our goal is to find the right person to fill this job. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the treasurer's update.
I'm briefly going to present tonight on House Bill 126. This bill was just signed into law, I believe, two weeks ago by the governor. And we're going to go over this briefly. There's a lot to this bill that affects us. I have our tax attorney here tonight, too, if you have any further questions. He's in the back, Mr. Hinkle. Basically, in the past, we, as school boards, we used to be able to fight valuation. We used to be able to fight if a property owner wanted to devalue, or if a sale happened, and we felt the sale was not, the county auditor did not bring it up to the true sale price. So, we were able to fight that. A lot of business owners thought school districts were misusing this. So House Bill 126, it's been in the making for several years now. Finally got through both committees, the House and the Senate, and the governor signed it into law. This, again, is going to affect us greatly. Basically, what House Bill 126 does, prohibits the Board of Education from filing residential and agricultural complaints. So, we don't really file on residential, most school districts don't. They don't file against a residential devalue or a residential sale price, unless it's a $10 million home that wasn't, wasn't, you know, priced right. But it prohibits us from doing that now. We cannot file any complaints on residential or agriculture. It permits the Board of Ed to file commercial complaints, which we have a lot of commercial property in the, in the district, only when the property was sold the year before, one year, and we have to wait, you know, a year. The sale price was at least 10%, so it has to be a sale, has to be a year, has to be 10% and $500,000 more than the auditor's value. The $500,000 value is only for tax year 2022. The amount will go up with inflation each year. So it, it has to have a sale, you know, within a year, and the sale price has to be 10% and $500,000 more. Requires the Board of, the Board to provide notice and pass a resolution for each parcel with a notice going to the tax address and mailing address. So anytime we want to fight anything, we have to file a resolution to do that. We have a lot of commercial property in this district, so let me remind you of that. Requires the Board to give notice to the property owners at least seven days in advance when they plan to vote on the resolution, challenging the valuation. So not only do we have to pass the resolution, but I have to give the property owner a seven-day advance notice that we're going to file this resolution to fight their valuation. Eliminates notice to the Board for counter complaints, which means the Board of Education will no longer receive notice from the county auditor when a complaint is filed. Right now, we get, we get notices from the county auditor saying a complaint has been filed, which means the district will have to file counter complaints within 30 days of the date the owner files the original complaint. So they're not going to tell us the complaint was filed, and then we have 30 days to file the complaint. However, the property owner still must receive notice of the Board of Ed complaints and have 30 days from receipt of the notice to file a counter complaint. So again, they're not going to tell us, we have to figure it out, and that's, we pay attorneys to do a lot of this. Bars settlement agreements. Settlement agreements usually occur when, you know, you're fighting, you're fighting the valuation for several years, and you come to a happy medium. A lot of times, settlement agreements happen on big box stores, your Walmarts, your Lowe's, your Home Depots, where they say, where we say, okay, we'll meet you halfway, but give us something in return. Usually a monetary value of something in return. A lot of school districts use this to get cash value upfront, and then to agree to some happy medium of the valuation. We are no longer allowed to receive settlement agreements anymore. Provides that the Board of Revisions must dismiss a case if not decided within a year. At my first school district, we had a three-year-long dispute with Walmart. So if the case is not decided within a year, it gets dismissed. Prohibits a board from filing an appeal to a Board of Revision decision. Once the Board of Revision makes its decision, we are no longer allowed to file an appeal. Usually, we can file an appeal against that decision, and then it goes to the Board of Tax Appeals in Columbus. So, our attorneys were able to, based on historical data, go back and look at our sales, at what's happened, you know, from 2015. Based on 2015 to 2017, if this law was in effect, we would have lost $1.1 million in our revisions, in our, our fight to keep the property values where they're at. And if we do 2000, 2018 to 2020, it's another $500,000 if this law was in effect, based on what, what we've done in the past. So that's $1.6 million since 15, that would have been in jeopardy if this law was in effect. Now, moving forward, again, we can only go based off of historical data to opine on what's going to happen moving forward, but this law just made it a lot harder for us to fight any of these devalues or anything that, that happens with, with the commercial property. I, I, you know, again, we hire attorneys to do this stuff. We, I, I don't believe, in, in knowing a lot of my fellow treasurers, that we had ever abused this privilege of being able to just make things fair and right. But again, the business community fought very hard for this, and this, this took about two years to get pushed through, and it finally is going to be put into law, I think, in July. It'll go into effect. So, you know, right now, I'm working with, with our attorney and Kevin, just to figure out what's our next moves. How are we going to do this? But the board will see, you know, more action in front of them to, you know, pass a resolution for each parcels, if, if we're going to fight the parcel. If, if there's a valid sale price, the board will have to pass that resolution, and we'll have to give notice to the property owners that we're doing it. You know, a lot of information was given to me by our attorneys, and, and just based on the properties that, that we've fought, they've, they've been sale prices, they've needed to be brought up. The county auditor's done a good, did a good job in the past of making sure those sale prices got brought on. But that doesn't always happen, so that's why we had the luxury of being able to, to fight those values. But now, our, our hands are going to be tied. I think this is going to be a law we're going to talk about 30 years from now of, you know, wow. Kind of like House Bill 920, the House Bill that, that was passed in the late 70s, where we don't see increases on inflation. 1976, 77, that law was passed, and we're still talking about it today, how it hurts school districts. This law, this is going to be one of those, if, if we can't get something done about it. I know our professional organizations fought very hard. I know there was a lot of testimony by treasurers, superintendents, board members, and, and it, it still got passed. And it's unfortunate, but that's what's going to happen in the future for us, and being able to fight, fight these, these properties, if we need to. So, in working with, you know, our attorneys, we'll, we'll keep the board up to date as we move through the next steps of these, this process, because it's, it's new to everybody. I imagine, you know, appraisers, we're going to have appraisers, you know, working alongside of our attorneys to make sure that things are right and things are fair. But that's something we've never had to do before, was have, have appraisers in the game, unless, you know, you're really fighting. And again, I mentioned the big box stores. A lot of the big box stores do this all the time. They hire appraisers, come in, devalue the property to half, and then we have to fight it. Well, no longer, because there's not a sale price, are we going to be able to fight a lot of that stuff? So, we'll see. We'll see what, what becomes of this in the future, and we'll, we'll keep you up to date. And I'll keep, you know, keep Kevin on, making sure we, we know what's going on, so just wanted to give an update to that.
I had a quick question. You gave us a dollar amount, intact, idea, but on any given year, how many, if, if we were to have to do this, go through this process, like, how many resolutions, I guess, would the board see over the course of a year? That, we don't, we don't see this stuff. The board doesn't see this stuff. This is all kind of happening in the background, now that it's going to be in front of us. Two, five, 10 instances per year where things are kind of, we had to fight for, or we had to fight for?
In 2015, just based on sales, we fought about 25. And it varies from year to year, depending on what happens with the market, but that was 15. And, and as it goes down the years, I think 15 was a pretty big year.
15 was a pretty big year. Hello, I'm Kevin Hinkle.
Hello.
15 was a real big year. 18 was less. 18 was really, I've been doing this since February, since 1985. 2018 was the first time the auditor's office really got numbers close to right. I mean, high enough. Typically, if you go down by any street, or whatever the auditor, buy the whole street, it's pretty obvious price should be fine. But so there's probably, I would say, on average, 10 to 15.
10 to 15, yeah. I think 2020, there's 13 on the list. And, and again, we, we don't fight residential, unless it truly makes sense. It's our commercial properties. And we don't have any agriculture.
One of the things that will be different is that we're going to continue to police the, the sales that occur and bring them to the auditor's attention, because we, especially if they're under 500, because if they're under 500,000 and 10%, we can't file them, but we're going to make sure that the auditor has them.
What do you, what do you mean by under 500,000 or 10%?
If the sale is under, if the...
500,000 or increase.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And we, we would pick those up, and we would always file on these. The other thing would be, as Jill indicated, is more involved appraisers. Is that the Board of Revision, we typically would not hire a praiser to go to the Board of Revision, because, you know, a praiser won't have enough information, because the property owner doesn't have to provide. But I think at this point, we're going to have to engage appraisers to at least object and put forth another position, because we don't, if we don't, if they give them a reduction, we don't have the right to appeal.
Yeah.
So if they, what we would hope to do is that not get a reduction at the Board of Revision, then when they appeal, we can, we can cross it. And we're going to have to do the work to hand some over to the auditor, and some of the different work of the Board of Revision. But the numbers are significant, as Jill indicated, there'd be over that triennium, there'd be a million and a half dollars taken right out of your budget. Over six years, that's $300,000.
Thanks, Kevin.
It's interesting that, I was looking at the bill online, and some of the same names of the legislators that introduced this bill are some of the same names that you'll see on these other bills that are harming public education. Okay, next, we have a resolution. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution in opposition to any divisive concepts legislation, including Ohio House Bill 322, 327, and 616, as shown below, and I'd like to read it. Whereas House Bill 322 prohibits the inculcation of controversial content related to race, sex, and current events. Whereas House Bill 327 prohibits teaching, promoting, and advocating of divisive concepts. And by the way, divisive concepts is their word, not ours. Whereas House Bill 616 prohibits promotion and endorsement of divisive concepts, education, and material about sexual orientation and gender identity. Whereas all three bills are inconsistent with the needs of our students. Whereas all three bills represent an unprecedented intrusion into local control to determine and regulate curriculum and instruction. Whereas all three bills perpetuate false narratives that continue to divide our communities. Whereas all three bills encourage an environment of exclusion and intolerance, and have no place in public education. Whereas these bills devalue our students and families of color and LGBTQIA+ students and families. Whereas these bills aim to suppress dialogue and perpetuate an inaccurate understanding of our history. Whereas critical race theory is not taught in the Berea City School District. Whereas these bills are a threat to professional educators that stymies their efforts to address the diverse needs of all students. Whereas the legislation would have a chilling effect on dialogue and inject fear and instability into a system of public education that is already underfunded, understaffed, and under tremendous strain. Whereas these bills seek to place fear in teachers so they reconsider culturally responsive lessons and think twice about providing each child with what is in their best educational interest. Whereas educators and districts will be penalized for noncompliance with the provisions of these bills. Whereas these bills will discourage careers in education, impede Ohio's ability to attract well-qualified candidates to fill open positions, and will exacerbate the severe staffing shortages Ohio public schools currently face. Whereas the sponsors of these bills have not identified anything within the Ohio Department of Education's learning standards or in any Ohio public school district that prompted the need for these pieces of legislation, and instead include false assumptions about curriculum. Whereas the language contained in these bills would jeopardize the ability of the Berea City School District to ensure all students feel a sense of belonging and build a culture that embraces differences and promotes a safe environment in which all students and educators can be their authentic selves. Whereas the language in these bills opposes our American value of equality by intending to censor, marginalize, exclude, and discriminate against our diverse communities, including LGBTQIA+ and people of color. Whereas passage of these bills risks furthering the current mental health crisis through isolation, silence, and normalizing discrimination by creating a culture where students and educators do not feel valued and respected. Whereas district staff must be able to receive quality training on these and other challenging topics as they work to support the needs of our students, and these bills prohibit such training. Whereas our vision of a diverse community dedicated to inspiring the lives of character, learning, leadership, and service guides us in our resolve of being a school district that intentionally creates environments where students and staff can learn, work, and live with dignity, respect, free from fear and violence, and protected against discrimination, regardless of their race, ethnicity, religion, gender identity expression, or sexual orientation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Berea City School District, County of Cuyahoga, Ohio, that the Berea City School District remains staunchly opposed to all forms of discrimination on the basis of one's race, ethnicity, national origin, religion, sex, ability, age, citizenship status, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, socioeconomic status, title, or other dimensions of identity, as written in our resolution of commitment to equity and excellence in education of July 14, 2020. Be it further resolved that the Board formally opposes and rejects these bills of the 134th General Assembly as they devalue staff, students, and families of color and LGBTQIA+ staff, students, and families. They suppress classroom discussion and promote fear, intolerance, and hate. Be it further resolved that the Board authorizes the treasurer to deliver or cause to be delivered a certified copy of this resolution to members of the Ohio House, Ohio House of Representatives and Ohio Senate who represent the Berea City School District, to the sponsors of House Bill 322, 327, and 616, to members of the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee, to members of the House State and Local Government Committee, and House Speaker Bob Cupp, Senate President Matt Huffman, and to the Office of Governor Mike DeWine. Be it further resolved that it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this board, and that all deliberations of this board were in meetings open to the public in compliance with legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code.
I motion that we...
Pass.
Pass the resolution.
Second. Question, anyone wanna share anything?
I'm glad that we, we have this opportunity to make the statement about all three bills, all three bills at once, that we have an opportunity to deliver this resolution before they come back from recess. I am concerned about the, about the bills, and they're unnecessary on so many levels. I don't know the, how they couldn't enforce. There's so many questions about these bills, and they just don't have a place. They're somebody's mission, they're somebody's business, busy work, and I'm happy to have been involved with, a little bit with the creation of this, and I am happy to move forward with the vote.
I did a lot of research on all three of these bills and other school districts around the state before putting this together, and there are several school districts, none in Cuyahoga County yet, but in Columbus area and Cincinnati that have passed either against one specific, one specific or all three together. And I agree with you, Cory, it's unnecessary legislation, they're trying to legislate things that are not currently happening in our schools. There is no sexualization of minors going on in the Brea City School District. I'm tired of hearing it, it's ridiculous. One of our teachers came up, or Kate came up and spoke about, she's a social studies teacher, and how many concepts and standards they have. They don't have time to sexualize students. Why would they want to? It's disgusting. I'm tired of being called a groomer because I'm a teacher. I'm tired of hearing my colleagues in all school districts being called groomers. People need to grow up, okay? We don't have time to teach that kind of stuff. Why would we wanna put upon children that they're a different gender, so that they can face discrimination for the rest of their life? No, it, it's not going on, and it needs to stop. And people that agree with me need to step up, and need to start saying, we support the Brea City Schools, because we know this is not going on in this school district. Ready to vote? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. And thank you to our very supportive staff, especially at the high school, where probably most of this comes about. And I, I had the privilege to talk with a few high school students during spring break, and I heard about how they feel accepted in our high school by all staff, and it was just very heartwarming. It was also sad to hear some of the issues that they face with their families and other people who don't understand, but thank you to all of our staff for supporting all of our students. It is truly appreciated. Okay, I think we've had enough of a legislative update. They just came back from recess today, so nothing has been happening in committee meetings or anything.
Let's hurry up and get this to them.
That's on you. All right, are there any committee reports since our last meeting? Okay, Board of Education comments?
I had an experience last Wednesday going to the BPE Wild Robot Fair, or whatever it was, and it was kind of an amazing thing. I was coming from another engagement, pulled up and had to park across the street from BPE, because it was just so crowded, and families, when one talks about diversity, the population there, but it was like going to a football game almost, people waiting in line, and hearing the little kids excited, and their parents excited in anticipation of what was gonna be inside. Just a really great job by the Title I folks, if I'm not mistaken, getting excitement about learning and Arcade of Four Literacy Project, I think is a great thing for the district and for the, the students of the district.
There's a lot of events coming up over the next three weeks. I know my calendar has something every day, I think, starting Thursday. Lots of concerts and events in the schools, and of course, prom and graduation, so we're all gonna be pretty busy. Please support where you can. And somehow, the Board got an invitation to prom? So, Dr. Smithberger, just want you to know, we are not coming.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Well, Cory wanted to go, I'm like, no, we're not coming. I think it was more an FYI. Oh, wait, she said, she's saying, she's, she is still gonna go. Yeah, all right. My son won't be there, so maybe I'll go with you. All right. It's recommended the Board of Education enter into executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for watching.